Was it, do I start over?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Ankrum Planning Board Meeting for November 7th, 2024. Jay, could you call the role first, please? Present.
Hello, Matt. President. Darren Roberts. Palmer Irving.
Here.
Tom Brown. Don Hatt.
Here.
Sarah Gordon. Sarah Lowery.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a quorum, so we can proceed with the meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the October 10 minutes. Has everybody read the minutes?
Yes.
Any comments, corrections, changes?
I just have a couple of, I know for clarity's sake.
Okay, sure.
On the second page, under new business, the second paragraph in the middle, it says there was a road built to the subdivision, but nothing was ever built. What they mean is there was no house ever built, right? Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
So maybe adding a structure was never built?
Yeah.
Something like that. So it's not that we're contradicting the road? That we, and to thank, to clarify it, yeah.
We just gotta add the house without them.
Yeah. And then this car was not conforming and would not conform with the foundation law. That seems redundant.
Anything else?
Um.
Take your time.
On the third page, on the fourth paragraph, which starts with Mr. Chase, the, the last sentence, he reported that there's, Mr. Chase reported that there's an existing driveway, however, it has regrown with grass, however, it is maintained by mowing. I don't, I just think that's a kind of an awkward sentence. It's a minor detail.
How would you like to?
Maybe that he reported there's an existing driveway which is maintained by mowing. Existing driveway which has overgrown with grass, but is maintained by mowing.
Okay.
And then just lastly, uh, on the, on the last page, the third paragraph down, my name is Palmer Irving, not Irving Palmer, so a minor detail there. And that's it.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
I might just have a question or a correction. For the workplace harassment, question was raised, were the trees impersonal as in more information will be obtained? Did it obtain more?
It will not be, yeah. Perfect.
So with those corrections, Darren, did you get those corrections? Okay. So with those corrections, I didn't obtain a mo- motion for the approval of the October minutes?
I will approve the October minute.
Second.
I expect that.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you. Uh, any correspondence, Jay?
So I submitted my letter with nation, um, there will be a short term annual application that is in the works. We had an end of, we just giving the results that today, but other business team must also request that I attend the event. So that you could hear from them regarding the job to the top.
Okay. Very good. So conflict check, anybody have a conflict? Okay. Oh, business. Um. Alt. Snit slur subdivision. Um, and abbreviated site plan review. This application, just for a little history, was in front of the board in September. We were asked by the attorney to schedule a public hearing for the subdivision. The abbreviated site plan had some work to be done and doesn't require a public hearing. So we scheduled the public hearing for October. The attorney contacted us after the notice and the mailings went out and asked us to adjourn said public hearing to November. He's again, I believe, has asked us to continue the public hearing until December. So I need a motion to continue. We, we opened the public hearing in October as not to waste the notice and the mailings. Um, so there was no discussion, just for the record, on the application. So all we're asking, all I'm asking for is a motion to continue the adjourned public hearing until December. But my feeling is if we do not receive correspondence or attendance by the applicant in December, that we should declare the application moribund and take it off the agenda because I don't think it's fair to the general public that if somebody's following this application and nobody keep, continues to provide the information that it, we should just continue to allow it to be on the agenda. So that's my feeling. Can I get a motion?
Can I ask one question first?
Go ahead.
When we send out the correspondence, does it state the date of when the, because all our correspondence been inaccurate now?
As long as you open the public hearing, when you state that you're going to hold a public hearing?
Right.
It can be continued.
Okay.
Um, so we continued it once. We're now continuing it a second time.
Okay. So technically the public is still informed.
And, and, and my issue is that the subdivision could be completed if the applicant attends because we gave it the preliminary.
We've been talking about this.
Being delayed for the abbreviated site plan, which if it doesn't show up
Right.
in December, it'd be his option to show up and complete the subdivision or attend to hear the, for the public hearing for the subdivision. I don't know how much longer we really should continue it. I think, you know, three strikes, you're out, in my opinion, so.
We have to give him an obligation of that.
Um, yes, we're gonna, we, we should send the attorney that, a note that if he's not here.
December, then it's.
Then we're gonna take it off the agenda and it will have to renotice it. He will, he'll be responsible for the renotification, so. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I make the motion that we, uh, continue this till December. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the public hearing is continued till December. So that's the extent of our whole.
just that in regard to providing or immediate timing.
Yes, let him know that we've extended it again till December. If he doesn't show up in December for this subdivision application, we're going to declare the application moribund and take it off the agenda and it will have to be renoticed when he decides he can attend.
But he can put an end of public hearing.
We have to hold a public hearing. Not going to hold a public hearing without the applicant.
But I'm hoping the public can.
It's supposed to be, but he just ain't. They're not here.
Yeah.
Can't hold it. They have to be present.
Yeah. We, nobody's made a presentation to the public hearing. I'm not going to make the presentation with the public hearing. If the applicant isn't here to make the, the, the presentation and acknowledge that we're holding a public hearing, then how long can we go on? If nobody's going to show up? So that's, that's the extent of our agenda for this evening. But we have a surprise guest.
You can not. Hello.
So Wesley, this, this was, this was on the agenda last month.
I was, uh, I was surprised that I was not on the agenda, uh, and just now that I'm today. Um, but I, I don't, I don't know if I'd like to.
Um, I'm here to kind of tell you where we are with the project, uh, why we're at, where we're at, and talk a little bit about it. Um, so I presented last month, uh, the 16 acre, uh, minor subdivision. I had said that, uh, abbreviated site plan review would happen afterwards. I was working for the seller, the owner of the farm. Um, upon, uh, comments from the board about the house site and ridge lines and uh, aligning to comprehensive plans and zoning laws. Uh, I found it, uh, important to call the real estate broker and say that there is, uh, there's a feeling from the board that the house site might not be in an appropriate place. And because of that not being in what they call an appropriate place, uh, it would be, uh, uh, a travesty for the buyer to come along, purchase the property, spend all the money and then come in before you and find out that he can't put the house where he'd like to put the house. Um, I, uh, reached out to the real estate broker, the real estate broker reached out to, uh, the buyer. The buyer is Dennis Leffwick. Dennis is with us tonight. Uh, Dennis owned a home for, what, over, over a decade in, in Ankrum. Yeah. And, uh, so he, he found this piece of property, which he really liked. He, uh, it was represented, uh, through the listing and the real estate broker that, uh, uh, house site was, was, uh, on this one particular, uh, small knoll. Uh, on that small knoll, this board in 1991 approved the house site on there. Uh, regardless, uh, we decided it would be in the best interest of the applicant and, uh, the contract buyer, Dennis, to go ahead and do site plan approval at the same time as the minor subdivision and, uh, not spend more money to find out that, uh, he can't do what he'd like to do on the property. Um, so after that, what I did was I did some extensive research, uh, through, uh, all the laws, whether it was the town comprehensive plan in 2010, the, uh, first enacts of the Articles of Zoning, I think it was five and six. And, uh, then eight and, uh, in 2010, uh, followed by the passing of the zoning law in 2014. Uh, or 2010 rather, 2014, we, uh, the town passed the highway law as well as the subdivision regulations. In 2009, they updated their comprehensive plan and, uh, after the upper, updated comprehensive plan, the zoning has changed about three different times, twice in 22 to the final one we have in 2023. Um, so I've gone through and specifically looked at ridge lines, specifically, uh, looked in all those documents to make sure that what we are proposing aligns with the comprehensive plan. Uh, as nobody wants to spend thousands of dollars to find out in the end that they can't do what they want to do. Uh, so.
Got it, got it. Cut to the chase. Where are we?
So where we are, where we are, we are going to go through the site plan approval process at the same time. Um, but I spent quite a bit of time.
This is not an agenda item. You could fill this in. You can't make a decision.
I'm not asking you to make a decision, but I'm gonna hand you the research that I did and we're gonna walk through it. I think it's, uh, important to understand it. I think it's also very important as planning board members know it. Uh, I don't charge for continuing ed- uh, education, so it's a, uh, it's a pretty little lesson that we're gonna go through. And, uh, hopefully in the end, we'll be on the same page. Uh, so.
Well, if we all turn them at the same time, we'll be on the same page.
Be on the same page. So the first one is just a timeline of everything that happened, uh, when I explained kind of briefly. Uh, the second page is, is that timeline kind of written into a text file. Uh, so in the 2010 to April comprehensive plan, uh, Ankrum looks for division. They want to see in 2023. Um, and I highlighted everything that had to do with ridge lines and house placements and anything in all these documents. But highlighted, uh, the important parcels that we'll go over. So in the summary of that 2019 goals and strategies, the environment is goal number two, to develop policies and programs to protect groundwater, watershed streams, wetlands, woodland, and ridge lines. Uh, and C to protect scenic views, designate ridge lines, rural characters, establish visual impacts, analyze standards and visual impact mitigation recommendations. Uh, update the Ankrum zoning and other land use to ensure new development, minimize its negative impacts to visual and scenic resources. Establish the site plan review requirements for development and, uh, negative impacts to steep slopes and define ridge lines. Consistent with these, uh, guidelines. Uh, steep slopes, develop on steep slopes over 15 can be permitted subject to site plan review, guideline standards which control stormwater runoff and visual impacts on ridge lines. All land use laws in Ankrum should be updated. Uh, we move on to the next page, which is the environment number 2.1111, ridge line protection, uh, in the comprehensive plan. Establish guidelines to protect designated ridge lines. Designated ridge lines should be determined by the zoning revisions committee based on their topographical prominence and scenic importance. On these designated rid- ridge lines, locate structures so roof lines do not extend above the.
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
Is this one of the designated ridge lines?
It is not.
Okay, go on.
These requirements will be mandatory for major subdivisions and encouraged for minor subdivisions, which I believe, uh, it was changed later on to the due report. Amending the zoning to address steep slopes, ridge line protection, lighting standards revised, scenic corridor overlay boundaries. Establish visual impact analyst standards, including flood, clean map or zoning map, enhanced purpose, uh, enactments to detail crucial crucial role of aesthetic visual character plays, uh, which is done by regulatory action by the ZRC. So that was the extent of ridge line, ridge lines in your first comprehensive plan in 2010. Uh, then in 2011, we start to slowly pass the zoning regs, which come in in different sections. Uh, you'll see the first page, ridge lines on the property. If the town has defined a map, ridge lines and ridge lines shall be shown. No ridge lines in 2011 existed. The map wasn't yet created. Uh, same thing in 2011, section eight contains important ridge lines defined in the map by the Town of Ankrum. No ridge lines at that time were mapped or shown. A map showing the location of parcel in relation to any ridge line or give shed is defined by this zoning requirements in the Town of Ankrum Comprehensive Plan or otherwise by the Town of Ankrum. Again, no ridge lines at that time were shown and the ridge lines that are now shown are not on the property. Section five, section five had a detailed ridge line law that they tried to pass. Uh, they got for, uh, the public hearing and the plant and the town board. The town board enacted everything but the bridge line law in section five. And that was not, not adopted pending revisions. Uh, the zoning review committee, as you look, uh, was trying to figure out, you know, how extensive the bridge line should be, how hard it should be and, uh, what kind of hardships it would create for landowners and, uh, and potential, potential people. Uh, after, after that, the ridge line map is created, which you'll see, uh, which is, which is all in red there, which is not on our property. And then the 2014 zoning law, ridge lines are established because of that map. So the ridge line is steep slope protection overlay district is established in the overlay district that certain ridge lines and steep slope areas as identified as important in the Town of Ankrum in order to protect the environment in these environmentally sensitive locations and to maintain the scenic rural character of the town. Consistent with this comprehensive plan, the Town of Ankrum seeks to protect topological, uh, topographical prominent and scenic important ridge lines and steep slopes as part of the larger comprehensive plan objective to maintain and protect the rural scenic character of the town. Accordingly, the town of Ankrum conducted an extensive analysis of ridge lines and steep slopes areas of the town and I, and have identified the ridge lines and steep slopes areas filled which both have topographical prominence and scenic importance when viewed from publicly accessed locations. As a result of this effort, certain ridge lines and steep slopes have been designated, uh, as topographically dominant and scenically important, which are established as ridge lines and steep slope protection overlay district as seen on the map. Uh, we establish guidelines and standards for this zone, just like any other zone in the zoning. We provide measures that the planning board can apply in order to mitigate adverse impacts on ridge line and steep slope areas identified during, uh, any required review of the projects in Ankrum. And moving on, the project site proven not to be located and mapped within the, the, uh, ridge line and steep slope. Any applicant that believes a project or site or building envelope is not actually within may provide the planning board at the applicant's expense a survey or other credible evidence that sustains the applicant's position. But if the planning board agrees with the applicant, it can rule that requirements of this subsection do not apply to the project because it's located in the ridge line protection area.
Okay, okay. Uh, we'll beat time. So it's your, you're contending that being that it's not in a mapped ridge line, that your lot doesn't apply, requirements do not apply.
Right.
And there's no general ridge line protection in the code to protect.
There's no general ridge line protection in any of the code.
Okay.
And, uh, in 2014.
Only this.
What they.
Only what's designated.
Only was there, only was designated. And how that was designated was, uh, the protection overlay district had to be over an 800 foot elevation. With slopes exceeding 15%.
That was never passed.
No, this is what, what, what this map is. So everywhere that you see in red there is over 800 feet elevation with a slope exceeding 15% visible for more than four miles of road and three and a half acres or.
USGS 800 or 800 feet from?
800, 800 of the USGS or that, uh, north.
So it's a, it's a, yeah.
So, uh, I reiterate, the Valen Farm is not a bridge line or a steep slope district.
And nowhere does it say that it's preferred that it's not built on the highest point of a lock.
Oh, not, not, and that's only, not, and that's only one. And then continuing on in the, uh, land subdivision regulations, all subdivision shall meet the Ankrum zoning law requirements including but not limited to Article 5 of Ridge Line Steep Slope Overlay District. Any ridge line or steep slope overlay, uh, overlay district standards and mitigation tools, volun- uh, standards and mitigation tools voluntarily proposed to be included in the subdivision plan. So you can ask the applicant at any point to, uh, do whatever you like. But they have to do it voluntarily. That's not that I can make you do it.
Yeah.
Then we move on to the highway law. Uh, that's got really nothing to do with the steep slope. I did find that, that, uh, average slope of a driveway shall not exceed 10%, the maximum slope shall not exceed 12% for a length of over 200 feet, uh, which is contradictory to New York State Fire Law.
Yeah, I know. We know that.
Fire law, obviously, overrides what.
The 10% is the maximum, yes.
So then, uh, zoning is passed and, uh, almost 10 years goes by and the town decides we're going to update our comprehensive plan. Come on the, uh, comprehensive plan committee in the Town of Five Plains, which is good to do every 10 years. So it can refocus you and get, uh, things done that you want to get done. And then the zoning revision committee can come in and make changes to what your vision is. Uh, in the 2019 updated plan, they do say, uh, environment and open space and agriculture programs are in place to protect groundwater, streams, wetlands, wood lines, ridge lines, wildlife habitats and other biological diversity and natural resources. Uh, so they're saying that, that there's things in place. Uh, their goals for 2030 and above is develop policies and programs to protect groundwater, watershed, woodlands, ridge lines and encourage, uh, small community scale renewable energy practices. Expand protection of the town's unique scenic rural character. Consider strengthening and extending the ridge line and steep slope and steep slope protection regulation. So we're saying in the comprehensive plan, maybe we should expand that and make it a little bit better. Uh, and then it goes into a checklist, how that is going to be done. And it tells us what needs to be done for it to be done. In that checklist of, uh, to strengthen and expand zoning regulations for the steep slope and adoption of rural character impact evaluations as recommended, it was identified by completing this by utilizing a regulation. A regulation, any action that results in the development or new amendment of existing land use laws of town. This is typically referred to zoning, site plan or subdivision laws. The, in the comprehensive plan, we're saying, maybe we should, maybe we should, uh, take a look and strengthen the original. And if we're going to do so, we need to pass a law to do that. In 2020, uh, the zoning law was first amended. Uh, there was no changes in the ridge lines. The zoning revisions committee did nothing to change anything in the ridge line. In 2022, uh, there was one change to ridge lines and that was in the solar law. When solar law was passed, which has nothing to do with what we're proposing as a single family residence. Again, later in 2022 in August, they all exchanged again with the solar energy systems. They finalized that. And finally, in 2023 of last year, the only changes again were in the solar energy system. Uh, I talked with, with Dennis Sigler on the, uh, zoning revisions committee and he is unaware and doesn't remember any talks of strengthening ridge lines or speed slopes or anything like that. And, uh, so I'm here today because, you know, there were, there were comments about the house location. Uh, the house location, if it falls in the building envelope, which conforms to all the zoning laws, regulations and, uh, if zoning, the zoning, uh, enforcement officer believes that it adheres to those kind of regulations. Then the building location is appropriate as long as design professionals can get it, uh, to a point where, uh, it's as your job to make sure it's safe, viable and, uh, obtains to all the different law. Uh, so that was my research.
Thank you, counselor.
Going through extensive.
Good job.
Good job. Must have been slow surveying in October, huh?
Oh, boy.
So Ed, are you here to give her some advice on this application?
That would I like to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, you got more?
So I did, I just wanted to update you with the map, uh, of, of what we were, what we were thinking. Now, the real, the real reason that, uh, we're here tonight is I don't want you to make a decision, but maybe after that presentation, a, uh, simple, uh, discussion of the board that, uh, that we, Dennis is going to go here, hire an engineer, expense thousands of dollars to do, uh, erosion control and to redesign, uh.
But initially, we were looking at a subdivision, if I'm not mistaken.
Topography, right. But the subdivision is not going to go through unless the house site, the house site is.
You had issues with prior subdivisions. Have you cleared those issues up?
Uh, again, again, I, I did not want to.
You know.
Follow John Lyons, until, until it was kind of a, sorry, a consensus. A consensus of, uh, the house location.
Yeah, we do.
You gave me two.
Um, it's nobody going to take a suggestion. Do what they want to do.
Joe on the CEO. Joe on the C E on the on the D plotting, I had a lighter line for lap one, so it didn't stick out. So we made that a little bit bolder, that was one of the, one of the comments that we wanted to see. Uh, the other comment from Erin was she wanted to see the hundred and fifty foot buffer. Off of all of the different wetlands, uh, which is on there. Uh, because we are going to be doing site plan approval, we have taken a look. And rerouted the driveway, which we believe through a easy engineering. Uh, uh, and slightly changing topography, we can uh. Get the driveway, so it will be under ten percent the whole way up the hill, rather doing major grading. Where if you did get a chance to go to the site, you would have saw where the old one is, which. At the steepest point, it was about fifteen to seventeen percent. Um.
My clear.
Now, with that said, we're not here to also say that we don't believe that you can. Put a thing right on top of the hill that shines so bright and so ugly that nobody wants to see. Um, so with that, what uh we are, what we're looking and proposing to do. Is we are going to flatten out the hilltop, uh, to get a little bit uh more of a flat area here. And then be able, if you did get to the site, you saw it was all shale and utilize the shale to build the driveway. Uh, so we're not.
Done that work?
None, none of that work is done, that'll be all proposed.
Okay.
Uh, which in turn will drop the house site about ten feet down. Uh, which will be consistent with the tree line about at the same level. Now, the tree line, the trees average anywhere between seventy five and a hundred feet in height. So a house cannot be over thirty five, I'm not sure what the plan say, but. But it's somewhere in that, so the tree line should uh extend up over the top of the house by.
Growth line.
But you're going, your tree line's going downhill.
Well, but we're gonna, the, the, this is gonna come down ten feet.
To six sixty?
Yep. Six sixty.
No, that's six seventy.
Yep, and it's gonna come down about ten feet, we're down to six sixty, which about, that's where the tree line is. Even now, at six seventy, this is about six sixty, so six sixty plus. Say seventy five feet, you're still at, you're still twenty, you're still above, above. Above the peak of the house.
And there are trees all the way around.
Yes, now, these are more shrubs, it's more of a hedge rub, but the hardwood forest.
Yes, this, you hear this one, this is the.
Yeah, so this is all hardwood forest. Uh, with that said, uh, I went and I saw Ed and J L today. We went over the checklist for the abbreviated site plan review, uh, which we were gonna. Start to get everything together, uh, unfortunately. Engineers that just are busy or surveyors, it's not, it's not October anymore, so. So, uh, hopefully, I, uh, we are able to get that, I don't think we're going to be able to get it within a month. I'm not saying that we won't, uh, but what I'd like to do is come and update the board next month. Uh, I'd also, I'd also like to reach out through J L. And talk with John Lyons about what we previously talked about, about the previous two subdivisions and how.
Set up an escrow fund yet?
Yes, we made two thousand dollar escrow fund, we have given Ed a check. For a building permit, and once we have the checklist, then Ed can deny us the building permit. And officially refer us back to you for abbreviated site plan review, because to get to you, we need to, we need to be denied.
Please don't go to any consultant without checking with Jay, because.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't talk with anybody at all.
Unless you're paying them out of your pocket. Where is this lot now being created? I'm a little confused between the.
So this. That's.
Okay.
And I mean, this is the best.
It's not one, right, it's not one.
Um, but that's really always very, uh, we wanted, we wanted to heal a problem with the.
It was issues with lots that were.
Any problems, uh, with the house site, uh, location due to ridge lines. I'm not asking for determination or anything, just maybe a feeling, a conversation to make Dennis feel comfortable before he goes out. Spends a ton of money with consultants to provide you with a checklist and the things that we're going to need to be able to move ahead. To get the site plan approval, along with a minor subdivision.
Abbreviated site.
Abbreviated site.
Did you have some plan added at this point, or?
Well, the only thing I might add is that it's all. Can you hear it? The board is. Is making it very hard for individuals, whether it's Wesley or even. A private party to come or it would, uh, when they ask the things that they really shouldn't be getting. Um, this is, this is a site plan, a survey, uh, rather that has the envelope. It's allowed to be built there, um, why someone will say you can't do it there is beyond me. It's, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, it's, it's not in the bridge line. Uh, they are flattening it out, the house is not going to be built any larger than what I was only. Um, and that goes for when the board asks for plans or a house. Uh, why would it ask for building plans for someone who doesn't even have. Uh, the okay to put a house in a specific, specific area? It's beyond me, that's a, that's an awful large expense for an individual who knows the depth and area variance or. Uh, or anything else to that, but, you know, building plans are something that the building department should deal with. Not the planning board, the planning board shouldn't be worried unless it's in the status of course as the maybe colors or. Or, uh, or or just like the plot of where the house is going to be. So you're okaying where the house is going to be, not, not what the building plan is. So why you would ask somebody to build the plans before they come to you or as part of. What they need to be submitted is beyond you, that's a very, very expensive, I think, no as an architect, so.
I, I think we're entitled to design drawings, we're certainly not entitled to construction documents, I don't know if you're making a differentiation.
Well, what is, what is some design drawing, what is it?
Well, we show the, we show the, what went in the elevation, so when, how do we know what it looks like?
They're looking to get an area variance or the okay for itself to be. Or, or even an area variance, why would they need to submit building plan or anything? All it is, it is what you see as the document, like as the diagram and what you're going to prove as a plot plan. Why you should need any kind of building envelope or anything else, I mean, the envelope is there, if you're. You should need any kind of plan or anything, that's, I don't believe that's part of what the planning board's. Uh, criteria is in order for you to okay sign. I think the planning board needs to look at what you're supposed to look at as far as what their checklist is. And speak to it, and be a lot less confused, confusing between the board and the applicants. And or Wesley and the thing. That's my, that's my take on what's been happening with, you know, communication between you and the, the people that are submitting for you. And what I, you know, what they say to me is why do we need the, my the was, you know, it's another perfect example. Mike the was, who's going to be before you like that, but he, he said he needed, he needed to have a fire for the building. It's like he's getting area there, why do you need plans for a building? My, I didn't stop him, yeah, I should be, I should be. I, I understand.
I mean, all the looking forward, you know, we could have.
I, I, I think, I think, I think, uh, I think what I'd say is there. I think it's important to go through what is required, zoning law, exactly what's required. And that's what I as an applicant need to get to you. And if you want more or you need more, me as an applicant, I'm going to try to make you happy, it's happy that you can be. Like, I, I want to make you feel warm and fuzzy, I want you to like me back, right, I want you to like me, I'm, I'm gonna do everything I can for you. Now, if it gets to the point where I'm now, uh, losing money and I've, uh. I've spent so many hours trying to do everything that I need to do to do it. I'm just gonna say, no, we're gonna stick to the list specifically, and I think that's what, what, what you're saying, well, that's right.
Does anybody have the zoning law? What's, what is, we've always gotten design drawings for new houses and for new buildings. We've always gotten drawings, so I'd be shocked if it's not on the checklist.
Always have done something. And then just continuing to do it is probably not without.
Well, we're gonna look to see if it's on the checklist, it's always come to us, I don't know how you design a site plan without knowing what your footprint is. Well, you gotta, how do you design a footprint without.
The square footage of the lot and and compare it to the square footage.
And also, I.
Footprints of proposed dwelling drawn to scale and distance from the proposed property lines, that's the only thing that's on the checklist.
Well, what's in the code?
It's the same thing that's in the checklist. Abbreviated site plan, I don't know, now, site plan review will go makes you go through much more. Because if I'm designing condominiums, then you're going to want to know wherever you get your graphics, and you're going to want to know. A lot more than what we're doing for a abbreviated site, it's kind of.
Goes to the root of the problem, I think, Joe.
I don't know what the problem is, but.
We need to all have an understanding of what's there for and respectable law. To make it a lot easier with what happened and the board, both.
Understood, understood, all, all I want to do is what's in the code. Like I said, we've always received drawings because as a professional, you can't design a site plan unless you know what your building is. So I don't know how you put a foot. How do you put a footprint that's accurate on a site plan unless you've designed the building?
We came, we came off my launch.
What?
I, I have a picture of the drawings.
Okay.
And it shows the footprint of the hatch.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what we normally ask for. Yeah, and there's a set of drawings that you.
Well, the footprint is all you need on.
If, if.
The square footage, correct?
What?
Aware that we were asking.
Well, we usually get the, usually the.
But you can, well, my equipment, if there's measurements on it.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, square footage.
So in your, you think. If what you're approving is that this house is in compliance with the zoning laws and what I submitted to you. Has, has a full package, if you don't have a full package, with, with regards to your checklist there. Or what I submitted you, obviously you need to ask the applicant to submit more information. But if you have a full pack. It shouldn't, it shouldn't go beyond that, your personal feelings, or I think this, I think that. This is hard thinking, you got a checklist, you go through the checklist. And if they have everything submitted, and you make it, because they're getting.
Right, you don't want to make it harder than it should be, right?
No.
So, so in the, in the code, it says specifications of materials submitted for site. Elevations and floor sections, elevated. Not abbreviated, okay, okay.
Catch conference. This abbreviated.
Well, that's good, like, I haven't finished.
Well, we're here to say, um, they should be third, it's right, well, that's. And then totally after that, we study what. You can find this unnecessary, you know, abbreviated site.
This is a. And what, what page did you say it was on, remember?
Two thirty six.
This is a farm operator.
And they, they're a list of what needs to be mounted on.
This is for not part of the subdivision. So this is, this, so this, this would be counted as not part of the subdivision, because we're going to subdivide first, and this is going to become its own thing.
Right, it's submitting a whole number of.
Right, for the subdivision, so this is not going to, so that will be done, and then this will not be a subdivision, this will just be a. A really, a, a plan, a plan, well, no, that's a whole survey, just saying about. This will just be a piece of property, just be one. Review, so it's after two, where is after two?
So where will we find, steps to subsection of.
And can you clarify, because I wasn't there last night? When was it requested that there were house plates? That's not in our minute, it's not in the minute, last.
Yeah, we never asked, we were doing the subdivision first.
And I believe Erin Robertson made a suggestion that it not be on the bridge line, that we prefer it not to, it, it's not. Obviously, you can't make me do that, but there are certain things we prefer, but if you don't want to do it, like, as most people don't. It's a suggestion.
I'm just trying to understand, just because I wasn't here, like, if, if what happened, you know. Because isn't it, if I'm understanding correctly, I mean, we do the abbreviated site plan so they can be like, yes. You have your building in plot, this is where we are suggesting to lay things out, go ahead, subdivide. Buy your land, and then they go through and have the building. Plans and all of that, and then that comes back through to us and. If needed, right, so isn't it two different things?
So. At, at this conference, what we want to do is those who both forget. The subdivision and a video site plan.
Right, and I think that is where we're having issues, because that's what we're struggling with, with the other person from Crest Lane is that. I think people are trying to do both at the same time, and our hands are getting a little bit tied, because for what we're supposed to do. We're not supposed to be doing those at the same time, because we're required to have some of the information before proceeding to the next, so it's more of a technicality. That I think we potentially can offline and figure out how we can improve our process going forward, so. Because this is something that's happening, but it's also not something that we feel. Because this is something that's happening, but it's also not something that we feel.
John Lyons, I believe this was Meg, attended a meeting of the planning board and it ended, it's actually that, and said that we were creating another document for it.
Right. Because that's where we're getting stuck, is that I think we're being, people are trying to come, they're trying to make their lives more efficient, but unfortunately, the way it's done right now, we don't have the feasibility to do that. So it's not necessarily that we're saying, no, no, no. It's the, this is the way the process is currently written. Right.
That was, well, it's got during, uh, exactly that.
So everybody is aware that there's a hiccup.
So.
No, it's on the checklist.
It's not.
Right.
That's where we were last month. We were talking about the subdivision, some lots that had been created, and he was gonna get back to us with some information.
Right, so I think if anything, we have perceived more information than we need for the subdivision other than the lot issue that we're still needing to be discussed.
Well, the house design came up, which wasn't even discussed last month.
Right, but that I think was more of a, it sounds like, curiosity.
I saw the placement of that. So, right.
Yeah.
Yes. And I think that, that again can be something that I know people have preference on, but isn't necessarily written into code and, you know.
So, but like, in a day's life.
I completely agree. I think that there needs to be, my personal opinion, there needs to be more clarity within our plan of what that means, because I, that is the assumption in the community, but-
But we can't, if it's not stated in that document-
Exactly.
Then there's no issue.
Exactly.
You can't create an issue if it's not documented.
But that also puts us in a bit of a lot of a hard place, because it's a situation where we have people who are wanting to build in locations that provide beautiful views, et cetera. And we also have community members that are not wanting to do that. And, and I understand, I'm just saying.
Well, there's, there's, there's a difference between sort of the intention of the comprehensive and, and the letter of the law of the company, of, of, of the zoning law, right? So, and sometimes those are, there's an intention, but it's not actually written in the law.
Exactly.
So we just like to-
So nobody's saying, no.
The intention.
I think we need clarity, which-
Our community, like this, that's the intention, but we can't force you to do it because it's not in the law. So we like to mention it.
That looks like a conversation that's good, because if you have a conversation, I'm gonna do, like I said, as the applicant, I'm gonna try to mitigate it to the best extent I can.
Right, exactly. That's, and that's, I think that's what Erin was suggesting, suggesting that maybe you can mitigate this.
But I think that's exactly what happened, right? You did.
I'm, I'm not saying what happened or what didn't happen, but I came out, I came out after the last meeting and I felt like, I felt like I, I was told, due to the comprehensive plan and the laws, that people tell me, no.
No, I don't think, I was never our attention. But I think, but I think what happened actually in practice was that, so Erin made a suggestion and you went out and said, oh, I'm gonna try to mitigate this a little bit by flattening the land even now.
Right, and that's the idea.
Which I think is what the process is supposed to be.
I agree, I agree.
I don't know, I, I think that you're making a sort of tempest in a teapot. I think it worked exactly the way you said it, you know?
But I also-
Suggested, and you were like, no, that's a good suggestion. It's not gonna do anything wrong and I'll try to help everybody out.
I also think there's a lot of opportunity that clearly within our government, we need to clarify.
Absolutely.
Some of what it's written.
Yeah, but that's the future.
Right, and that's not our job as well, so.
We can't, we can't hold stand, different standards.
Completely, but we're not doing, we're not trying to do that.
No, yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that because the issue keeps coming up.
If this-
The idea that everybody wants to come up here and build houses and be beautiful, but if everybody builds houses, oh, pluck them down all over the ridge line, it's not beautiful anymore. So, we're trying to make suggestions that people can build their houses, but still keep it a pretty pastoral place to live. But if, you know, if the hillsides are all built up, who wants to look at that? No one. Not even you.
There's no rich ground here.
What?
There's no rich line designated.
Okay, I, whether it's designated or not, though, the, I, the, it, the intention and the idea of it, yes, you can do it. No one says you can't do it. We're just suggesting that maybe if there were a better place or a different place that wasn't as visible, and I don't know whether it's visible or not, then maybe you would consider that.
You know?
But what if someone don't wanna, right, in your light, light of sight, right?
Someone is.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Don't be, you're not the bare bench of the whole lot, it's heavy, one nine seven pack road, and it hasn't been there for thirty years. And nobody's ever told me to come in this time, and this is, but, uh, three times more elevation than, uh, the subject of official state.
Like I said, it's not, it's not that you can't do it. It's not in the law that you can't do it.
Yeah, no, nobody's saying you can't do it. I mean, to me, to me, the whole thing worked exactly the way it was. There's a comp plan. We thought, oh, the comp plan says we should try to preserve it.
Right.
Told Wesley. Wesley went out and made a couple of changes and, and now it can, you know, obviously it conforms legally, absolutely. And it did even beforehand.
There is a catch.
Why, well, we can't.
I mean, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but the process seems to have worked.
This was just discussion for what I was understanding.
I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, there's issues with the requirements for abbreviated, there's issues with the requirements for abbreviated site plan, because you know a survey is not required?
I should all, what?
A survey is not required for abbreviated site plan? Yeah, how do you do a site plan without a survey?
I'm a surveyor, I'm gonna tell them what's important.
Thank you.
See, sometimes.
Because you can't, you physically can't do a site plan without a survey. I've been arguing that that's gotta come out, because you can't do a site plan without a survey. Any kind of site plan.
That would be an issue for the zoning review.
And I, I-
We need to make some changes, that's more. Right, we can't, we can't change what's in front of us now until those changes are made.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. That's, so.
Anyway, um, other than having this discussion, there's nothing else we can do for you this evening.
Yeah, I just wanted to update you. I thank you for your time and we're gonna keep forging ahead and, and uh, as soon as we get all the list items to submit and, and organize us the building permit, then we will, uh, uh, we'll be back for site plan approval. In the meantime, I'd like to stay on the agenda to keep you updated of what's going on every month. It probably won't be this long, it'll be a lot quicker the next couple of times, if you only have five minutes.
It's been customary that if you don't resubmit anything, you're not on the agenda. So, and starting in January, applications are gonna have application numbers.
We're gonna have application, what? Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so we were talking, like a number and a date.
You mean, like, so we can track our progress?
Organization.
I love that.
I don't know, if it's not an official submission.
So, we're ready to, well, so we have no further business.
Yeah, we can adjourn.
Get a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Wait, so there, I don't have prospects involved, I said, there are no prospects. Oh, it's crazy. I know. And what, it, it's, it brings me up to play, he, like, all of his land, none of it's in-